Welcome, everyone. We are calling to order our work session this afternoon. It is about 12:14. And the purpose of this work session is for the Board to have an opportunity to take in from our staff all the input that we've received. I know that's going to be covered in just a minute through staff presentations, but we've received an enormous amount of input that is extremely important to this Board. We're also going to talk through the different options that the Superintendent and her Cabinet have reviewed and put on the table. We're going to talk through the current situation that exists as a result of the executive order that was released last night, or I'm sorry, yesterday afternoon. I want to say at the outset that this is an extremely important decision. The Board members, every Board member knows how important this is. I don't think there's ever been a decision that any school board has ever been asked to make in the history, certainly of our lifetimes. And I do want to make sure that everybody's listening, our teachers, our parents, our employees, our entire community understands that every Board member understands what's at stake. So I did want to preface it with that, we are not going to be making a decision tonight. This is a work session only. We're not taking public input tonight. And the primary reason for that is that, one, our work sessions are a time for the Board to deliberate, but also because we've taken an enormous amount of input. And I think it's important that we take an input in a way that all voices have an opportunity to be heard, and that we can make sense out of that input. And I think that I want to start by just commending our communications team and the Superintendent for the outreach and the way they have organized the information so that we have the best understanding of the priorities and the concerns and the suggestions that have come in from so many constituents.
Has joined the meeting.
With that, Dr. Jenkins, I'm going to turn the meeting over to you. And I want to thank you for the tremendous amount of work that you have personally put into this and the incredible work that your Cabinet has put into it.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Happy to share with you some of that work today. And let me also say how dedicated we are to trying to provide choices both for our employees, our teachers, as well as for our parents. This, again, I have to keep saying, it's an issue that we have never dealt with before. And so we are having to feel our way through some of the issues. I will tell you, we were ready to post the agenda in the PowerPoint, and then the emergency order from the Commissioner came down yesterday and sort of caused us to have to rearrange a lot of what we thought we would be presenting today. I have to also say, I don't envy those in leadership at the state level for decisions and strategies that they have to put in place. Many will say the timing could have been different on this matter. I will tell you, that order actually somewhat simplifies part of our discussion today with some of its limitations. And we will move forward from here. I like to tell individuals, I have some colleagues, and they like to use the analogy of Dr. Pino building a plane as we're flying it. And I think that can be pretty deadly. So I prefer to say, we are building the bicycle as we are riding it. That can be painful. You can certainly have a few scrapes, bruises, hopefully not a concussion, but it's certainly not as dangerous as building an airplane as you're flying it. But the notion is, you have to have a high tolerance for some ambiguity and some flexibility in place as changes are made and plans are directed differently. And so Dr. Vasquez and I were exchanging up until probably midnight last night. And what you have before you is hot off the presses, what we believe is the PowerPoint that shares most of what we should be talking about today. Some of what you will hear, if you'll take a look at the agenda, and by the way, anyone listening, this has been uploaded to Board Docs. Anybody has the ability to look at the same PowerPoint presentation that the Board is looking at. Our agenda is going to go through several issues. It's why we booked it from 12 until 5 potentially. It may not take us that long because we have truncated some of those discussion points based on yesterday's emergency order by the Commissioner. But we are going to have an update from our very own Dr. Pino from Orange County Health Department because his input is considered vital for our discussion. I also want to publicly thank him. Last week, he spent nearly half a day with us going through with our staff as we were working through, trying to come up with the presentation. He was extremely helpful there as well. And while I don't want him to get all the blame for it, he certainly did give us good information, good intel around this whole notion of still trying to consider face-to-face graduations. That information we shared with graduating seniors last night. So after he finishes his portion, then we're going to talk a little bit around the guidance that's been provided for reopening our healthy learning environment. And then Mr. Paul Marini, your Associate General Counsel, is going to go through some statutory guidelines. And I have to say, for those who are listening, our Board is quite aware of the roles and responsibilities of the school board, the Superintendent, et cetera. But we had some questions, and it became clear we needed everyone to be on the same page. So for our employees and for our general public, we're going to clarify some of those issues around statutory guidelines. I like to make a brief mention of our resources that we've been dealing with. They are extensive. And then I'm going to have Mr. Howard come forward, talk briefly about those survey outcomes. They are dated now. That was back in May. Certainly, that was prior to seeing the increases that we have been seeing in our numbers here in Orange County. And then the leads for each of the work groups who helped consolidate and condense all of that think tank information for the Board will present their summaries. Again, on our website, as we shared in our Connect Orange message to community members, to parents, and to our employees, the summary is on our webpage as well as the entirety of the think tank input. Again, not a vote, not a survey, but a compilation of ideas from our community around our reopening. We think by then, we'll probably be ready for a break. I want to mention as well, we will cut through in each of these presentations, have opportunities for discussion and questions from Board members so that we are not saving all of our questions until the very end. After our break, we will go through some additional agenda items that you see in your handout as well. We'll cover those after the break. So at this point, I want to say again how much we value input. Spoke with Wendy on more than one occasion, spoke to her again today after the, I keep wanting to say executive order, it's an emergency order came out. Spoke with President Wendy Dormel from CTA again today. We all agree that these are different times and challenging times, but we believe we can get through it and come to some conclusions and to provide for both our employees and for our parents. That being said, I would like to now invite to the podium, you will notice we are separating our speakers. So Dr. Pino is going to bring us both an update and some of his thoughts as well. Dr. Pino, thank you for being here. It's supposed to be on, if it's red, it means it's on. There you go.
It is red. Good afternoon. Thanks for having me over. I will give you an update of where we are in COVID-19 in our county. And also, all the data that I'm going to reference today is in the last 14 days. Why the last 14 days? You know, this DC goes in cycles of about 10 to 14 days. And any other older cases lack significance for the future in the sense that, you know, infectious periods are already passed. So it's no intention in debating that. Next. Next. So this is the data of the last 14 days of the age distribution of COVID cases. But also in Orange, you have fatalities. And as you can see, the majority of our cases in the last 14 days are in the younger segment of the population, and the fatalities are on the older end of our population. And this establishes a significant characteristic of this pandemic, and is that right now is feeling through people who are the younger age. Scientists are debating the fact that the virus may have mutated, and this new mutation makes it more infectious, and that's why it's traveling so fast, but less deadly. And that's why we have seen not an increase as much in the death rate as we have seen in the infection rate. And the hospitals, undoubtedly also, are mentioning to us that patients are presenting less sick and requiring less care. So just to give you an idea, about 52%, 55% of the population, 55% of the new cases that had happened in the last 14 days are between people who are 20 to 40 years old. So that's very young. That was not the case at the beginning of the pandemic. Next slide, please. This one is the race distribution. And I'm not going to go too much into this one, but there has been a huge debate about health equality and distribution of the disease in our population based on ethnicity and race. And I think what the pandemic has done in this is that it really has exposed the health disparities that we had in our society for the longest. And of course, people's, you know, if we say that people with pre-existing conditions are most susceptible to poor health outcomes, and then we have people with chronic conditions who have been uninsured for a very long time, and those people tend to be people of low socioeconomic status and people of color. Of course, something like this come, and it's going to reveal to us those disparities that has been in our society for the longest. And people with unmanaged chronic conditions, not in this pandemic, in any pandemic, and in any health condition, will perform less than those who are healthy, exercise, receive a healthy diet, have access to primary care, and have insurance to qualify. So that's just elemented, you know, public health 101. Next. This is the last 14 days by ethnicity. This is following the census track definition, so it makes it confusing for people to realize when we talk about black, non-Hispanic, why non-Hispanic. But these are the distribution on those groups. Next. And this is a graph that I follow closely. This is incident rate. This means how many people per 100,000 were having the disease. And at our highest, prior to what we have seen right now, we were about 21 people per 100,000 with the disease in our county. Last week, we were at 343 people per 100,000. So that gives you an idea what kind of explosion happened in the pandemic. And the numbers that you see in the bottom are, those are the weeks of the year. In epidemiology, you define things by week of the year. We are in week 28. And also, I'm going to talk to you later, but you can see right there that we see also a decrease between week 26 and week 27, which is last, last week that we ended. I'm going to explain that one, and what would you think is this is about? But it actually coincides with the 11, 12 days of the masking ordinance by the mayor. We cannot establish causation, but we can establish correlation. We masked, we made masks mandatory. Two weeks later, we saw a decrease in the number of cases. Next. This one are, what are the underlying conditions that people more likely in our county were having before they died of COVID-19? And the trap three, hypertension, cardiovascular disease, and diabetes are a significant precondition for poor health outcomes when it comes to COVID-19. Obesity too, but all these comorbidities go together. And they also present a lot in people of color with lower socioeconomic status who have not regular access to healthcare. So that's a, that's a cocktail right there that is a recipe for disaster. Fortunately, and it's sad to say fortunately, but when you compare to other counties and other areas of the country, our death rate is not as significant as other places. And there's also a reason for that, we think. Next. This is our daily curve. This is the number of cases that has been reported to us every day since the first day that I can now see because I need new glasses, but it's in the bottom of the, six of you, I believe, on the bottom of the graph. And this also indicates that we performed well until the beginning of June, and then it went wild, it went international, but it also has been a little bit irregular. And at the end, you also see that we are experiencing some decreases that I will go through it. Next, please. And this is our weekly epic curve. What we do weekly, we do it weekly because a week seems to stabilize the data much better. In part because this is a function of the labs and when we receive results. So we could be receiving constant results through a week that belong three or four days prior. So we stabilize it when we look at the entire week. And you see there on week 20, the first peak that we experienced, and then on week 25, the second high peak that we experienced. Next. Now here is, on the right, on the left of the screen, you have the weeks. Those are in yellow, in blue. Then you have the number of cases per week and the percentage change. And as you can see, in up to week 18, we were doing just fine, decreasing every day the number of cases. And then I start taking off and taking off. And then on week 24, we have an increase of 207%. And then in week 25, we have an increase of 113% with respect to the prior week. And then on week 26, we have that huge increase that we saw, 142%. The significant that I wanted to highlight here to you is that on week 27, that's the week that just finished, we have a decrease of 21%, negative growth of 21%. And that's a significant number. Now, I cannot say that it's a trend. It just happened that week. We have to see how the data continue to behave. But this is the week that coincides with the new emphasis on masking our county. In smaller scales, we have seen that when we have outbreaks and we mask the outbreak, the incidence, the incidence of new cases goes just, just cleft, it just plummet. Now, a larger society level, it will take a little bit longer, but when you have an outbreak of 20, 40 people, and you have another 100 people, you mask those people. And it had happened in some of the outbreaks in the county. And immediately, the rates drop off. So that's why we insisted, and the mayor was very gracious, to put in effect the order for masking the entire county. Next slide. And this is how we compare to the state at large. And we hospitalized a little bit more than the state. This could be several reasons. Although our doctors are describing the people are presenting less compromised health-wise, we also have a high number of beds available, and the hospital plays with those numbers. So sometimes they could be more inclined to admit someone that in other conditions may not be admitted. That's one of the reasons. The other reason, and we have to explore a little more, is that some of the new treatments, although decrease the state depending on what kind of protocols are used, people may need to be hospitalized for a little bit longer. In health-like workers, we do a little better. Only 8.5 of the total number of people with COVID-19 in our county are health workers compared to 9.4 for the state. Our fatality rate is also lower than the state. And I mentioned this before, we think in part it is the fact that our county is very young. We have a very large segment of our population that is very young, and maybe influence this, as well as the median age has decreased. And I mentioned to you earlier that 50% of, about 50% of our new cases are between 20 and 40, and that's a reflection on the median age that has decreased to about 32%. And at some point, we look at clusters around UCF, and the percent, the median age in that case around that area was 21. So you can, the data is kind of fascinating in this pandemic. Next, please. This is a graph, this is generated only here for our county. And let me explain this one. A lot of people have put a lot of emphasis, which I agree, on positive rate. What is the percentage of cases that you are testing that are become, you know, coming back positive? And what we are doing here is we do a rolling average of the last 14 days because that's for us the better indication of how the pandemic is moving and behaving. And although it's very slight, it's very subtle, you can see that the curve is starting to decline in positive rate in our county. And it also coincides again with the masking of the county. The highest that we got was at 15.27% in that rolling average. Now we are at 14.58. Although it's a very small, it's a very small decrease, and we have to take it with care and be careful about how we interpret it. It's kind of indicating that things may about to change for us again, and we hope that we have learned how to keep it this way. Next. And this is the same rate, but it's calculated per week, and it's also to give us an idea of how this is behaving. It will take a little bit longer before you start to decline in this type of graph. But let's see how week 28, which is the week that we're on, is behaving. Next. And this is an interesting graph. This is, this is hospitalizations, and this was as yesterday at 11 o'clock in the morning. So we are at a highest level of hospitalizations since the beginning of the pandemic. But also, for example, yesterday at 5 o'clock, we had 357 individuals in our county hospitalized for COVID-19. Now, we have regional systems in our county. It doesn't mean that everyone who was hospitalized was a resident of our county, but it was at least hospitalized in one of the hospitals in our county. It could be that someone from the surrounding counties came to Orange for Care or was transferred to Orange for Care or is using one of our intensive care beds in the county because another place was at full capacity, or that kind of stuff could happen. And then in blue, you have the ICU beds, the number of people that are hospitalized in ICU beds with COVID-19. It's only 72, but it could be, there are more people in ICU, but these are 72 with COVID-19 diagnosis. Now, it doesn't mean also that everyone is on ventilators, but most people who are in ICU for COVID-19 will be on ventilators. And as soon as you come out of the ventilators, they will try to, you know, remove you out of the ICU as possible. Right now, with regard to ventilators, yesterday, the last number that I have in my mind, we have 485 ventilators available in the county and about 544 beds available in the county. Next. So this is a little bit how we calculated, and it's a little bit crooked, but I'm going to describe it to you. This is how we calculated recovery rate. The media and the community has insisting a lot in getting a perception of how many people, what percentage of the people have recovered. Although I have, you know, we have calculated, we understand the need for that information, we think that is not reliable, but with that caveat, we are giving it up. Why is it not reliable? Because we are basing this just in data and time. So we don't know if someone really recovered, that it was in the borderline, but it could be, I think it's close enough. And right now, it's at 61%. And at some point, we're in the high 80s. So meaning the number of cases in the last two weeks have increased for us, and that increase of, decrease, of course, the number of people who have recovered. Next. And this is how people, what are the main symptoms that people are expressing in our county when they describe to us, this is when we interview them about the COVID-19? So most people start with, the majority of our people, about 58%, experience fever, dry cough, muscle ache, and headache. Those are the four first symptoms that come most often in the scales when we do the interviews to our residents. So fever, elevated temperature, and cough, and muscle ache are one of the first symptoms that people are experiencing. And it's also important when you want to prevent people from exposing others. So if you have a fever, if you have a dry cough, if you experience a muscle ache, you should stay home and see testing before you venture out into the community to prevent the spread of the virus. And we have insisted to people, please stay home if you are sick. Next. And before I move, I don't know if you, the former, if you are going to have some questions about COVID-19, or you want me to touch. I want to touch with you a little bit about immunizations, just to give you a perspective of something that may be brewing in the back end that we want to prevent.
So why don't we take a break here, because we do have a number of Board members, and just take questions on what you've covered so far? So let me, let me start by telling you, this is an excellent presentation. And I've gotten more information in a meaningful way than I, than I'm generally getting when I just watch the news. And you've presented it in a way that gives, again, gives us more useful information. We're not finding it on Board Docs. Is it possible for us to upload this presentation? Is it now? Okay, it wasn't when we started the meeting.
Just have to refresh.
But it's now? Okay, wonderful. Because I was trying to find it because I want to go back and reference it, and I know anybody who's tuning in, which is going to be a large audience today, will want to be able to do that as well. Secondly, I did have a couple of questions about, before we move off of COVID, about the impact and what we know. Well, first of all, you said something that I didn't know that I've heard before, and that is that we, we do have evidence that it is, that the virus is changing. Okay. And that could explain the less deadliness of the virus. That would be very good news. But I think the part for me that I still struggle with is how much real data do we have around children and their ability to not just become sick because we know that they don't have the same likelihood of death and serious illness, although it's, it's real, but it's not as prevalent. How likely are they to transmit it if they're asymptomatic? Are they still transmitting it? Is that something that there's data on that we can rely on to make a decision?
Not especially on children, but anyone who is asymptomatic can transmit the disease to others by sniffing, coughing, talking loud, spitting, you know, that type of, and that's why masking is so important. Asymptomatic people are playing a bigger role in the transmission of the disease, or at least when they are asymptomatic. And the part to understand here is that people don't feel sick, don't behave like sick people. You don't feel it, you don't behave like it. More people who, when they feel sick and they learn about this, they retrieve themselves and they protect others. That's a normal instinct for the most part. But if you are not feeling it, so that's why masking should be universal and to prevent the fact that, and even for people like, for example, I already had it, but I'm wearing a mask, because it's also a sign to respect for others and to protect other lives. So in that, that's why we think the mask right now is the best tool that we have to prevent the spread of it.
So let me go back to the question about children. What I'm not clear about is if, one, I don't know how many children were tested. And you point to the fact that, I think, I think most people are being tested because they have symptoms that could be COVID, or because they have, they're highly vulnerable, and they're concerned and wanting to know as quickly as possible. So I don't know the number of children that are being tested. And I also, a very basic thing I don't know about, and I think you can answer this, if a child, it does not test positive, then they're asymptomatic, they don't test positive, but they've come in contact, does that mean they could not transmit it? Say they've been around tons of people, and they test negative, does that mean they can't transmit it, or do we know that answer?
So in the middle of a pandemic, a negative test has little significance. So in the middle of a pandemic, a negative test has little significance for the transmission of the disease. In the sense that you are negative today, when you did that test at this point, you go next door, you can acquire right away. So that's why I always have insisted that we have to assume that everyone has the virus. It's the only way that we are going to protect ourselves adequately if we assume that everyone has the virus.
I agree with you on that. I'm just trying to understand. I'm trying to understand whether a child can transmit it if they've been in contact with it, but they don't have the virus. It seems to me that they have to have the virus to transmit the virus.
They have to have it on them to transmit it. I think what is now has been clear is can I transmit from this surface to this surface with my hands?
And I think what's also not clear to most of us is how likely are children to contract the virus?
There's not much information on children right now. Although the state and CMS has put out a very aggressive protocol to start testing children as much as we can. And we are part of those protocols and we are envisioning ways where we can test children. Although there are new methods like saliva and others less invasive methods that will play a bigger role in testing children. So although we are developing those strategies, so those methods are also coming online that will make it a lot easier and safer to test children.
Any idea timeline, time, timeline on that?
Well, the saliva is already done. You just have to have a lab that perform that type of test.
That would be extremely beneficial in the education.
Yeah, it has some issues with reliability, but it's, it is, it's being done, it's being used.
Okay, let me go to Member Gella.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for being here today. And this was, this is great news as the Chair mentioned. This is the first time we're seeing some of this information and it's very helpful for the hard decisions that we have to make over the next week. There was a study by, a French study that, it was very small, but it kind of showed that children who had the disease don't transmit it as highly as adults do and really are unable to contract the disease as easily as elderly. Have you seen that study and is there any truth to that?
So it is true in the sense that that's what they experienced. We don't know what is, we are going to experience. We have experienced things a little bit differently. And also the steps that we're taking in France with regard to prevention, they're quite different to the approach that we have taken in the United States at large. So our experience could be completely different. In the sense that many of those places were or still in shutdown for longer than we were. That's, that's one element to keep in mind. But in general, the assumption right now, based on experience and observation, is that children are less likely to acquire and less likely when acquired to have poor health outcomes. Although we have seen a small percentage of children with a very aggressive immune system inflammation that has been in the news. And we also have experience on death unfortunately in young children due to complications and other conditions. But it's, it's, it's less aggressive with children. The younger you are, the less aggressive the disease seems to be showing to be. The same for people in their twenties. We have large numbers of people right now in their twenties that experienced the pandemic. And they are less sick than elderly people that were presenting at the beginning of the pandemic. People in their fifties, people in their sixties seems to experience this a little bit harder than people in their twenties or younger.
And as far as the spread with younger people, there's, do we have any data that show, that shows us, I'm sure we, that they spread it less? I mean, we know, well, we've seen over the last few weeks that people in their twenties can spread it quite easily. Is the spread less in younger children?
So with that, and I always said to people, the virus doesn't spread, we spread the virus. We move, we swim, we fly, we walk. The virus doesn't do that. So I think the emphasis has to be in the measures that we put in place to protect everyone from that, from that exposure. We cannot rely on in the fact that children are transmitting less than adults. Because transmission is going to happen. What we have to aim, I think, and that's what the board in our meeting emphasized, was to create a safe environment where we can reduce the chances of transmission at the minimum as possible. Because transmission is going to happen and we have to assume that it's going to happen. Because you not only have children, you have adults in the school environment. So those are going to interact. And you have probably elderly people in your workforce, how you are going to interact. So those are important, how we protect us from the virus all in general.
And then just one more question, Chair. The rise that we've seen since the beginning of June, and it's been substantial. What is, what is that being attributed to? Is it the reopening of our economy, more people moving around? I know a lot of it on the news is kids in bars. Do you have any insight?
Yeah, it's all of that. I think that in, and again, I only can talk about the county because that's the data that I'm familiar with. In our case, I think that we were victim of our own success. We were really low. And I think it may have given people the full sense, a full sense of security. And with that, then it came Memorial Day weekend. And okay, let's celebrate, we have been hunkered down for three weeks. And I understand that, you know, it happens. And then we have the social unrest in that week. So none of that helped to this.
Thank you. I'm sorry, thank you, Member Gella. Let's go to Member Kester-Dental. Member Kester-Dental, check your mic.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Down here. Dr. Pino?
Yes.
I'm over here. Thank you for your presentation. I appreciate all the time you've been spending and sharing with the residents of Orange County, keeping us up to date. I know that you, you were working with our school district. You gave the opinion that it was not safe to have graduations. So do you say it's safe to reopen our schools?
Could you define safe?
Can you define it?
Well, safe could mean different things for different people. Is safe for, for in the case that you are talking about, is zero transmission? No, you will see transmission. It would be exceptionally miraculous if we have no transmission anywhere. Again, this is a pandemic environment. It is a completely mindset. It's just, this is not hypertension, this is not HIV, this is not syphilis, this is not any other infectious disease. This is a pandemic. And that means you are going to have high levels of transmission. And in many cases, high level mortality. In everything that you have to do in a pandemic, how do I mitigate? How do I mitigate what is going to happen? How can I keep it safer than what would be without taking this approach or those steps? So if safe, safe is an interesting perspective on that one because, again, transmission is going to happen. What I will consider, the way that we are managing, and it's a little bit different than other counties, is we have developed a strike team. And we are concentrating ourselves in outbreaks. What I can guarantee you is that if you have an outbreak in a classroom, we will be there next day testing everyone in that classroom to be able to stop transmission from happening any further. But remember that what you are going to have in the schools is a sub-sample of your community. Whatever is happening in the community will happen at the schools. Now, how can we take steps to mitigate that from happening at the level that had happened in that community? Now, you are also, we are in July and we are talking about August. So from here to there, our picture could be completely different. It could be that we are safer, that we have a reduction in the number of incidents, the new cases. Or it could go the other way around and that we may experience what Miami is experiencing. So I, I, I think the superintendent used two fantastic, two very important words in a pandemic. Build flexibility and you have to build tolerance for what is going to happen. So we have to do projections, put measures in place, and we know we can protect people. Just let me give you a, an example. We tested thousands of people, our nurses during this pandemic. Proper PPE has been used. We have no transmission this far from the people that we are testing to our nurses. And they are face to face. So that's how I measure safe, safety. Is proper protection and proper steps are used, you are reducing transmission to a minimum, but it could happen.
Thank you very much. What, I get confused by what phase we are in, in the county.
You are not the only one.
I'm not the only one. Can you tell us what phase we're in and then?
So the state is in full Phase 2 implementation.
And is the state in the same phase as the county? Do they go?
The state detects the phases.
And what does, what does Phase 2 mean?
I was hoping you didn't go there. So restaurants are 50%, but bars were also 50%, but they were closed in another executive order. So it can get confusing. You have no gatherings of more than 50 people in, in one space. So those are one of the limitations of, of the guidance for Phase 2. Now, different, we don't have masking at the state level, so that's our county level. In our place, in our county, is mandatory but not enforced. Other counties is mandatory and enforced, legally enforced. So everyone has a little bit of everything.
Okay, so the governor, I believe, yesterday wanted to open up the schools every day for all the kids?
I have not, I read, I did hear on the news, passing, but I didn't read that. So I, I don't know yet.
So I was wondering, would the schools then also follow that Phase 2 recommendation of 50% capacity limits?
Everyone's supposed to follow the phases. But it could be that before school opens, we are in a new phase. I would not know that.
And then do we ever go back, backwards in phases if we're not doing as well? Do we go back to a Phase 1, like we might need to?
If we follow the governor's speech, he has said no.
So we could?
But Miami did, so.
Okay, so we could be doing worse as far as the number of cases in our community, but remaining at the same phase? We don't go backwards?
We haven't and we are not.
That, that kind of thing makes it confusing for people.
Yes, very confusing. I'm confused myself.
If you're confused.
Well, confused in the sense of keeping track of where are we, what is changing? Because it literally changed every hour. Every time that I get a new email, it's a new thing.
Well, if the, if the numbers are so volatile, how can we plan then ahead for our schools to reopen?
So the numbers for us are not that volatile. We have been stable for the last week, I believe, or so, very close to a week in the number of cases. We have an explosion, seven, eight, no, 10 days ago in the number of cases. But again, immediately the mayor took the step of mandating masks. And we have seen a de-acceleration of the pandemic in the county. The data shows that we are moving in the right direction. So if you ask me, if we continue to move in this direction, would it be safer to open the school in August than it is today? I will tell you yes, but I cannot guess that. But if the data continues to move in the direction that is moving, we will have less cases and it will be in a safer environment in our county.
All right, I have another question. Even though there is a trend that might go down each day for two weeks, if we're still at a higher number of deaths and cases than we were when we closed schools, does that make sense to reopen them?
Those are policy decisions. I don't make policy, I advise.
Okay, one more question.
Yes.
Thank you for, for all your answers. We're looking at the number of cases of positive tests, but like the Chair mentioned, we're not really testing kids. I know when I've tried to find out if I could test my, my daughter, she was too young. I couldn't put her in the car and give her a test either. So do we really know how many kids have this? Or are we just looking at the ones that are hospitalized?
So no, we don't know how many kids, we don't know how many adults, if we are looking for exact numbers. The CDC is projecting, or has projected, that it could be up to 24 million people in the country with the disease that are not being diagnosed. And remember that we have a high percentage of asymptomatic people that may not seek care.
So is there a way to get more kids tested? Who makes that decision of what population gets tested?
So the Department of Health CMS has released a strategy for increasing testing for kids and given guidance to how to approach this. In our case, we're planning to do it during the back to school event and probably test about 4,000 kids. But we have decided to scrape that right now as it is.
You decided to restrict that?
To, to, not to do it this time because the location was not conducive for the massive testing that we would like to do for children. But what I'm trying to say to you, we are planning to increase our testing in children. Absolutely.
All right, thank you very much.
I'm sorry, thank you, Member Kester-Dental. Let me recognize Member Lopez. Excellent questions. And thank you for your candor.
Absolutely.
Member Lopez.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Based on your expertise, what is your opinion on reopening schools face to face in Orange County public schools and why? And can you say it in Spanish after you say it in English? So my community who speak Spanish can be benefited. That's helpful.
So the question is, if the question is, is safe to open the schools as we were operating before you closed? No. Procedures and guidance have to change. The schools, if, if you guys decide to open it, then have to open in a different environment that takes into consideration that we are fighting a pandemic. And that was part of the discussion that we have last week with the board. The board, I'm, I'm talking the board, you know, the, the board, not you guys. With the superintendent and her team, it was about, you know, what are the steps that we can take? How this is going to happen? And they are going through their exercise. How we are going to, do we have to limit class sizes? Do we have to have 50% of the class? Do we, what do we have to do? How can we offer knowledge and protection at the same time? And that was what the conversation was about. And I believe the board probably will do a presentation to you on what those steps are. So it's now my place to describe those. But what I'm sure to tell you is that hand sanitizer, hand washing, masking, and social distancing have to be in place. And that you have to try to mix and match people at least as possible. What I mean by that is try to keep the same people in the same space at all times if you can. Because what you want to do in any pandemic, and that's where the mentality have to change. If you have transmission, how can I know who was exposed? So that I can actively go and test and prevent and watch. And that's part of the challenge for everyone. So how can I keep cohorts together so that we can track them if we need to? That I know that Ms. Martinez was with those four children. And she got it, so I need to test those four children and perhaps recommend to the parents that they need to be tested. So that's part of the challenges that we face in our conversation with the board. En español. Yo creo que la pregunta, si la pregunta es, vamos a abrir de la misma manera que abrimos o que estábamos antes que las escuelas cerraran, la respuesta es no, no se puede. Lo que hay que hacer es tener en consideración las condiciones en las cuales estamos hoy. Y cómo podemos ofrecer conocimiento y seguridad al mismo tiempo. Y parte de, de, del, del reto que tenemos delante de nosotros. Es cómo podemos traer los alumnos y traer los padres y traer los empleados y cómo podemos mantenerlos seguros. Y parte de lo que sí tiene que estar definitivamente en, en, en place, en lugar, es tiene que todo el mundo tener una máscara puesta. Tiene todo el mundo que usar, lavarse las manos frecuentemente o usar hand sanitizer. Y también tenemos que tener social distance. La gente tiene que estar separada. El parte del problema que vamos a encontrar es que tenemos que tratar de mantener la gente en grupos todo el tiempo. So that we can seguirlos de un lugar a otro si tenemos que hacer un tracking. Esa, esa, esa práctica que tenemos muchas veces de rotar las clases o rotar los maestros, si se va a hacer, tiene que hacerse con mucho cuidado. Y si es posible, rotar el menos número de personas posible. Lo que queremos, lo que deberemos hacer es controlar el ambiente en el cual las personas están.
Thank you. I have a question for, I don't know, maybe the superintendent or Paul Marini. Do we have the average age of our staff members in OCPS?
No.
And, and do we have, or can we have, I don't know if this is possible or not, a percentage of staff members that are at high, high risk in OCPS?
Dr. Jenkins.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Member Lopez, we actually have run through all of that information because we had to be in contact with those who were either 65 and above or who had significant health issues. We've been dealing with that population. We can get you a number actually on, on that group, that population.
Thank you.
Thank you, Member Lopez. And thank you for that, ensuring the translation. That's very important, thank you. Member Gold, you recognize Vice Chair Gold?
Thank you so much. And thank you, Dr. Pino. You have, you have been a great guiding light in all of this difficulty. There's a couple of things that I would just like you to clarify for the record. I know the chair was asking about the transmission with children. And would you please explain what asymptomatic is and how the disease can get passed on even when people don't feel sick?
That's a very good question. So there are some people who are asymptomatic for the entire time. And most people are asymptomatic for a period of time before they have symptoms. So I'm going to explain asymptomatic person is a person that doesn't feel anything. I don't feel sick. I don't have headache, I don't have anything. Symptoms are things that you feel. Signs are things that a doctor can perceive. So everyone is asymptomatic when you acquire the disease, the virus. When you encounter the virus and comes into your nose or your eyes of your mouth, you are going to be asymptomatic for a few days. It has been said that people are, have calculated that most people develop symptoms by day five after the infection. Now, not to complicate things, not everyone put out the same amount of virus. And that's an important distinction, but so the people who put the more virus out, of course, are the people, people who are sneezing, coughing, not wearing a mask. And or speaking loud or yelling in an environment, that is conducive to large droplets with the virus. And that's what happened in the bars. People were jumping.
And so the, just
Yes.
Just to clarify, so if, if an adult or a child were to come to school asymptomatic, at what point would they have?
They will become infectious.
Pass on?
Yeah.
Okay.
And that's infectious.
That's what I wanted to clarify.
Yeah, it's different for every person. Most people develop symptoms by day five. But those are for the people that develop symptoms. I was going to go, go into a percentage of the people who don't develop symptoms at all. And in our county, the last calculation that we had, it was about 20% of all cases were asymptomatic for the duration of infection. So there are also some people who have the virus. They have it for 14 days and then they are asymptomatic the entire time. Now, remember that this is a virus that doesn't stay in your body. When it completes the cycle, it disappears. So there's, there's a difference. There are viruses, HIV, herpes, chickenpox, they stay in your body forever with you. They don't leave your body. These viruses leave your body.
So that's good, that's some good news. How would you, you know, we, we know that we're going to have some brick and mortar and some face to face based on what came out yesterday and as we go through the rest of our discussion. But, and we also know based on your numbers that the, the younger people do not have the severity with the disease, thank goodness. But those with comorbidity issues like asthma, autoimmune, heart conditions, even in our children, what would be your recommendation for our more at-risk populations? And how we handle those children and ensuring them that they get the learning that they need?
Well, I mean, with regard to the children, you, you will make the decisions. But my advice is that for anyone who is a risk for poor health outcomes, we should protect them from acquiring the virus as much as we can.
Thank you very much for that. And I, I know what the CDC guidelines are for businesses and such. And I'm sure we're going to hear about a lot of recommendations that we've all seen through various emails and surveys. But how accurate and how fast are the results of such things as tracking by thermometer and temperature? Does it truly help to mitigate the spread of the disease if we're doing that on mass with kids and staff every single day coming in? What are the best tools and techniques would you advise at our disposal to have on hand as people start to move around?
So that's, that's a very good question. And that's one that I defer a little bit from my colleagues in public health. Let me, how I phrase this without getting in trouble. Yeah, I mean, trouble with my colleagues. I disagree, the temperature checks at a point of entrance in a building are a good measure. Why I disagree with that? Not with the temperature part, because temperature is one of the elements. Is that you have made that person to travel all across the county in a bus or transportation where we four more people in the car to take the temperature at a place where already the person is inside the building, probably is sneezing in a line, waiting for the temperature to be checked. So that's where I come from with adults or with parents if they want to squeeze a child in. Now, by now, we learned that you take aspirin and 20 minutes later, you are cold like a chicken. I mean, just cold. And what it does to the temperature check? The person who may potentially have tried to squeeze in and may go through the check. And, but some places have decided to take temperature check. We're also in Florida, so our temperatures change when I'm exposed to the environment, especially in the summer. So the, the parks, for example, that are experiencing, they are taking temperatures. And many people have showed up to half elevated temperature, they sit at the side, the person wait 20 minutes, they take temperature again, the person has a normal temperature. So temperature is very good. What I'm going to say next, in, in the case of the schools, I think that the best way is to take temperature at home. And then if the temperature is elevated, then stay home. But if you get the child in a bus or whatever transportation you have, or walking in a group if it's close by the school. And then you got a guard who has to take the, or someone, the nurse, temperature to 300 kids, that's going to create what you don't want, which is the mingle and mixing of people in an open space that you have no control for. My humble opinion on that one. What I, what I will advise is to stagger. If you were to do it, then you have to stagger. You have to avoid congregation of people or traffic in different directions in the hallways where people are facing. So that's why the supermarkets are making lines. This is the way to go. And if you are going to have traffic of people, then you have to control traffic. This direction, this way, this direction, this way. So that people are not facing each other, bumping against each other, especially kids. But those are things that the Board of Education probably thought about it and will talk to you about it. But we will, me, I am, our epidemiologist will always be at your service to help you to figure all this out if that's a decision that you make.
Well, I, I truly appreciate that. And I know you're going to get into immunization, but when it comes to at-risk, you know, sometimes kids make it into school without their immunizations. What are the risks of having another outbreak when we're already susceptible? And what, how would the two kind of cause an even greater difficulty or catastrophe if we're having to deal with both this pandemic and the possibility of another outbreak that could have been prevented by immunization?
Yes. And, and that's what I'm going to talk to you next, uh, because it's something that I want to alert you and I want you to, to be mindful. So there has been a decline, of course, because of the pandemic, has been a decline in immunization rates around the state.
Dr. Pino, I apologize, I hate to interrupt you. But if it's all right, because we have a couple more members.
Sure, sure.
And I know you have a whole, a presentation that is important for our public to, so let's, let's make sure, Dr. Gold or Member Gold, was there any further questions on this topic? And then we're going to go through the rest of the speakers.
No, I am, I am finished and I'll wait for the rest of the speakers and the presentation on immunization.
Wonderful. And let me also ask if we can get some help from our IT. The speaker volume for both Dr. Pino as well as our board members that are calling in is very low in the chambers and hard for us to hear. So if you could turn those volumes up, it'd be very helpful for the remainder of the meeting. Let's go to Member Bird.
Hi, Dr. Pino. Thank you so much for your presentation and for being here with us today to help us. I'm just wondering, how long, I have not been tested yet, so I don't know. But how long does it take for results to come back from testing?
It depends where you get tested. Some people have to understand that there are a multiplicity of labs doing testing. And you also have to, each place is a little bit different. We have seen an increase in the number of tests. Again, in our county, on Sundays, we have double, uh, the number of tests that we are performing. And everyone, not just the health department, but you know, everything. And with that has created a bottleneck in some of the labs. The one that was taking the most, the longest was the Orange County Convention Center. But that's also the one that are doing the most tests. Sometimes they do about 2,000 a day now, 1,700, 1,500 a day, close to 2,000 Sundays. How long it takes, again, it depends of the lab. Within is taking five to six days, which is too long. And with all the labs, like the one that we use, it was 24 hours and now taking 48. But those are, those are the range between 48 to five days.
Okay, so, and the reason I ask that is I'm just thinking if we had, you know, someone with a possible exposure with, in a school, I'm thinking in a classroom setting, and it takes four days to get the test results back, would you recommend that that person not attend or isolate while they wait? Is that the recommendation?
Well, if we do the testing, it will not take four days for a classroom.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Do you have, I know how you feel about face masks. Do you have an opinion about the shields, the clear shields that go over the face?
They have the same effect. Some people think that it protects even better because it protects your eyes. But something really interesting to understand about this virus is that it's very heavy because it's surrounded by the crown, corona, that's crown. And that crown is made out of proteins and proteins are very heavy. So it drops on surfaces and the floor very quick. Now, there was a new study released yesterday or before yesterday that it can travel a little bit farther in droplets. That's totally new. I haven't read the entire thing. But the knowledge that we have right now is that it drops rather quick. It's not like missiles. For example, the issue with missiles, which I will talk, is that if a child has missiles, sneeze, leave the room. Anyone who comes in that room for a period of time can be exposed because it suspends in the air and you can't breathe it. And that's our concern always with missile. It's, it's very infectious. Like this virus is very infectious, but for different reasons.
Okay, so in other words, you're saying that with a shield, there's still the potential for it to drop?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
You will see some people using face masks and shield.
Okay, thank you. I know there's been, and I, I think that Dr. Castro Danelle might have kind of touched on this, but I've had computer problems. I was distracted, but there's been talk about pool testing and testing groups. And I think you kind of touched on that, but do you have an opinion about setting up like preventative testing, like a testing schedule of groups of children in schools?
So what you are advocating, I think is called sentinel testing. So while you're doing epidemiology, if, and that would be an interesting thing to do, is you monitor the presence of the virus in your community. Meaning epidemiologically, it can be designed that you do random tests in different schools to measure the potential of asymptomatic people in that environment. And that has been done, we have done it. It can be very useful in some circumstances. We are doing it with the long-term care facilities. We have a system in place where we constantly rotate. In this case, we test everyone because they are seniors, they have pre-existing conditions. So ethically, you cannot justify to test two people to see if they have the virus and leave the other one. But in sentinel testing, for example, in children, let's say, and this is not a scientific design. This is just talking, we will have to do numbers to see what the proportions are. But you could test, let's say, five students per school every week randomly. And randomly is pull out a head or the first in the line, whatever the, the random system would be used to monitor what the presence of the virus is in the school environment. You can do that. You can do with teachers. It's a very interesting conversation to have.
Okay. Is that something you think that the health department would be interested in doing if we were to open schools?
Yeah.
Yeah. My last question is just about the hospitals. I know that you said that we're seeing a spike in hospitalizations. And I had a conversation with a hospital executive earlier today and he said the same thing. It's kind of alarming, actually, is the way he described it, with how much the hospitalizations are going up. So my question is, how can you explain that the hospitalizations are going up, but that we are seeing a slight decrease in the cases?
So that's, that's an interesting question from an epidemiological point of view. As I said, the disease takes about between five to 10 days. But, you know, we cut it at 14. It's easier for people to understand two weeks. And if it takes two weeks to develop, it takes about another week to get really sick. For most people, some people get sick right away. Just in general, the larger percentage of the population, you know, you start with fever, you have cough, it gets worse, it gets worse, it gets worse, and then you decide to go. So that's what we are seeing now. Three weeks after Memorial Day, three weeks after the explosion. It's more than three weeks in Memorial Day, but it's three weeks after the explosion. So now we are seeing of that wave, the number of people that are getting hospitalized. So now we are seeing of that wave, the number of people that are getting hosped.
Okay.
So it runs behind.
Okay, thank you. Um, and then um, my last thing, if it, if we were to see um the hospitals continue to increase, I'm, I know you said that you, we would not go back to, or the governor said he would not go back to a, you know, a lesser level or whatever. But we obviously, at the county level, we could shut things back down if we needed to, if hospitals were to get overwhelmed, right? I'm assuming.
Uh, that's for the county.
Okay, um, okay, then I'm done. Thank you so much, Dr. Pino.
But where you were going, our hospitals are operating in full capacity. They could produce, and that's, that could be a local decision. They could reduce um elective procedures and increase inventory of beds is needed. That would be the first step before doing a surge capacity. Now, in the middle of the prior increases that we saw in March, April, our hospital without uh elective procedures were at 50% capacity with all the COVID cases. So right now, if they were not to have elective procedures in place, they probably could be around 75%, 65% capacity with the number of cases. Now, this county has an inventory of bed of the excess of 4,000 beds. So we have a lot of beds in the.
Okay, good, thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Member Bird, Member Colbert.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Dr. Pino, for being here, your presence is very valuable to us.
Thank you.
This is, um, this decision is going to affect more people than any of the theme parks, any of the counties, whatnot. And not only do we have our 210,000 students, our precious, precious children, we also have 25,000 employees to consider. So we thank you. I have four areas of questioning. So you said that symptoms can present in as early as five days.
Earlier than that, but that's the average.
But if you do have the presence of the virus, are you contagious from day one prior to symptoms? Or obviously, if you're asymptomatic, but when, when do you begin being contagious?
So you are the most contagious when you have a fever. If that answered the question in that way. There are different levels, and again, it depends, it changed from individual to individual because it depends on the amount of viruses that you are putting out. But anyone with fever and COVID does. And that's why the CDC, in part of the routine to work, has a assessment that at least, and the same that you use for children in, in school, at least you have to be 72 hours without fever, without fever reducing medication to be able to return and consider yourself, okay, this is out.
That's my concern is that whether they're children or whether it's adult to adult in a brick and mortar environment, we could be contagious and spreading without knowing it for a number of days. My second question is, and this is, this is what we need, we, I know you can't make policy, but we need your recommendations. And even in the executive order, the commissioner said that those local health professional recommendations are what will be critical to our decision-making. Would it be your recommendation that we require face coverings of our employees and students if they return to brick and mortar classrooms?
It is a mandate in the county, so they have.
It is a mandate in the county that when you are in public and public schools are in public, so that would be your requirement. Thank you. Third, I have some teachers who say they would be more comfortable returning to face-to-face classrooms if more antibody testing were available. So they would know whether they have those antibodies. Do we have that readily available in the county yet? I know the governor announced that they were going to put a priority on that in his uh press conference a couple of days ago. Do we have that available in Orange and where would they find that?
So uh, some of the hospitals and some of the clinical services are offering antibody testing. The convention center is offering. Um, we are looking to increase that in the county as much as we can. The question with that is the machines, are the ones that are difficult to get your hands on, as you may guess. Um, it's useful, um. Epidemiologically, and I'm not talking about individual, I will talk about that after, for the community at large. So everything that we do in public health is about public and the community at large, not one individual. That's personalized care, that's a different story. And that's why you go to a doctor. The, the issue with antibody testing is that the only thing that it says is you have been exposed to the virus already. Now, there are two types of antibody, the one for short-term memory and the one for permanent immunity. Because the disease is so new, we don't know how long that immunity lasts. So what I'm trying to say is people should not take a false sense of security and safety because they have an antibody test. That is, you know, that says, hey, you have developed immunity. Because we don't know, even know yet, how long that immunity is going to. For example, for months, um, we see always a surge of um cases around college age because you start to lose immunity as you age. So we don't know anything about that with this. But it's useful for healthcare setting because if you have immunity now, I know as a healthcare professional, who I can rotate and put closer to the patients at the same time that I protect workforce. Part of protecting the workforce in the healthcare environment is to keep society running. So we have to have able, people able to provide care to continue to have society. It's the same why we have emphasized first responders, firefighters, police and the homeless and people who are in assisted living facilities. So there is a strategy behind uh antibody testing. Massive antibody testing from a public health point of view has no significance because it doesn't interfere with infectious period and that's why you're trying to.
But it, it is a possibility that some of our teachers who want to and choose to go back into our schools, that could give them some more confidence if they, if they know that that's available.
Oh, yeah, 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 I will give anyone confidence to know that, you know, you had it already, so you don't have to worry.
Okay, so now this is a, this is a best-case scenario and looking for your professional. So one of my concerns is the rate of positivity, not so much the number of cases or the number of testing, but the higher rate of positivity that we are experiencing now. So in your presentation, it goes back to June 22, but we were shut down by order of the state in March. So the rate of positivity was even lower than that in June.
Yeah, it was lower.
Okay. So considering the rate of positivity, even if we go back to that lower positivity rate in March when we were closed down, and if we do have all of the protocols in place, the face coverings, the social distancing, which could be this, this difficult in some situations within our, our buildings and our buses, uh, all of those protocols in place, and we're at a lower rate of positivity. And if we were even able to achieve a reduction in the number of students and adults in our buildings by half or more, because we want to offer many different virtual options. Would you then recommend that we open schools or possibly delay opening schools by a minimum of three weeks, which would take us to the end of August? What would be your professional recommendation with all of those, that scenario in place?
That's a tough question, uh, because I.
That's what we're here is to ask the tough question.
We, I, I don't know where we are going to be in August.
Let's say, let's say we have that lower positivity rate at the time that we were shut down at that lower, say we get back there, which is best-case scenario, and we have all these protocols in place. What would be your recommendation to go forward with opening in just four weeks or delaying that by another three weeks?
So few observations, if you, if this positive rate um give you thoughts for closing the schools? And if you think that the positive rate of um 7.0 still too high.
Right, half of what we have now.
Well, half of what we have now. Then you are going to be closed for a long time. Um, because we don't have a cure, we don't have a vaccine. And if we have a vaccine, which they are saying we may have in January, we have to realize how effective that vaccine it is going to be. And even that, you will be better prepared to vaccinate the children. And I'm assuming that's one of the first places that we will vaccinate if we, if we get a vaccine, to massively run a vaccine campaign. Um, I don't think that the positive rate should dictate how you open or close. I'm going to explain to you why. The positive rate is a function of when we get the test result, not when the test was performed. So it could be because of the seven days delay that I explained, we are getting tests today that were performed last week. Although we are measuring the positive rate today, it really belongs to last positive rate. That's why I use the 14 days average, because it gives me a better handle on the weekly. Because it falls on the week, so I don't care if it was Monday or Friday, but I got it in that week. So that's, that's something to take into consideration. And I go back to what the superintendent said, in whatever plans you have, you have to be flexible, build flexibility so that you can move back and forth depending on what the conditions are going to be in the ground. Because they could be very different in two weeks.
And, and that's the plan, but would you recommend we delay opening by that minimum of three weeks under the executive order that says we have to open in August, but it doesn't say we have to open August 10? Would it be your recommendation that we delay our opening for a few more weeks?
I will be able to make that condition when I see the full plan that the board is planning to implement. Because the discussion that I have with the superintendent and her team was about what are the things that we can do? What are the things that we are imagining? And we give suggestions, what other things could be added? So in that sense, I would prefer to see that plan. If it's today without any measures in place, no.
Thank you, that's very helpful, thank you.
If we have measures in place to mitigate and those measures are sufficient, if we are staggering students, if you are trying to keep them um in a safe environment and in cohorts, uh, that could be different. I could be, I think that in the flexibility, you also have to be the flexibility, I'm sorry to go too much into this one, that some zip codes are more of a situation than others. So it could be that, I don't know, 3, my zip code, 32803 is awful, but 32809 is doing much better. So part of the conversation with the board was also, do you have the ability to see your catchment areas? Are you mix and matching from different zip codes? How the schools are set up in the distribution or who they attract? So it's, it's just too many questions.
But we may be coming back to you after we see the presentation, thank you.
Oh, I thought that was it.
Not off the hook.
No.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Member Colbert, again, excellent questions. Dr. Gordon, you're recognized.
Yes, can you hear me?
We can hear you, I am still struggling, I don't know about the rest of the board, that the volume is a little bit low for our callers and for Dr. Pino, for those of us up at the dais. So if there's any help I can get on increasing the volume, I would greatly appreciate it. Dr. Gordon, I apologize for the interruption, we can hear you faintly, but we will continue to listen as carefully as we can, thank you, ma'am.
Okay, thank you, I am changing telephones to save the help any. Um, I, I want to thank you, Madam Chair, and I would like to thank Dr. Jenkins and her staff on for putting together all this work and then having to go back after hearing from the Commission of Education and having to go back and redo um a lot of this that, that we kind of have some kind of handle on. But Dr. Pino, I think I'm one of your biggest fans because I have really not left out. So I'm, I'm listening to you and Mayor Demme and Mayor Buddy Dyer every day. So I try not to miss your presentation, I catch you two or three times a day because I really would like to know what's happening. I know that I hear my fellow colleagues saying to you that you are not a policymaker, but we are. We are the policymakers, we don't operate. Um, and I heard you say you advise, I think people really need to know what their roles are and where we are and we're staying, but you're talking to eight of the policymakers for the school board. And, and my concern is, number one, if you could, I'm going to give you my questions and if you want to write them down or whatever. Number one, I, I, I don't know where we are getting, I don't know who the head is. Because I, I, I'm hoping that it's the President of the United States. But then I'm also hearing uh the CDC, and then I'm hearing the governor, and then I'm hearing the mayor, and then I'm hearing, some of us live in individual cities. We have, if I'm not mistaken, 13 municipalities. So who is the leader and who are we listening to and who are we following? Because they're all mixed messages for our parents and the children and our faculty and staff that must go back on this pretty much mandated August statement. So just write it down and get the staff to write it down or whatever and come back and answer who, who, whose instructions are we following? Then the next thing I would like to know, I know that you're a big advocate of the vaccine, so am I. And I know that the previous back, I'm talking about the vaccine that the students have to take, getting it preschool and kindergarten and then middle school, which is amazing. It has really saved us from epidemic. Being that said, and there, right now, we keep hearing from the top saying that at the end of the year, well, the end of the year is here. School is August, September, October, November, December is the end of the year. Um, let me know if you believe a vaccine will be actually discovered by ban. And if it is discovered by ban, I heard you say that you hope that the children are vaccinated first. What is your plan for getting in and out of our schools when I saw the struggle of just getting African-Americans and Hispanics and anybody of diversity, the Haitian community, all of the other, those that didn't get in the long line? Um, or even those that were not affected immediately? What way, if this vaccine is presented by the end of year, what plan do you have? Then number, my, whatever number this is, are we supposed to follow you? Are, are we supposed to follow the medical field that you are working with? Or should this board create, like we created so many other things, um, to help us in the system so we won't be left out? Are we supposed to wait for you to come to us for our 213,000 students? Where will our superintendent, who is in charge of operations, get guidance? So we, we as a board will know he has that guidance. I am also concerned about the major breakout that just happened, we doubled. We doubled in, in, in Orange County. We doubled, I'm not even worried about Florida right now. I'm worried about I-4 corridor, we doubled. What is Plan B if we go back to school and these children are affected and we triple? What if then there's another thing? Are there going to be nurses in every school to provide? We don't have nurses in every school, okay, but then the county, certified nurses, all right? I know in the county I worked in, we do have nurses, okay? But there are some central Florida counties that you share with that do not have that. I'm concerned because we all drive across the county line into another county. Then how will you all, will this be the school's responsibility? That we need to create policy, that we need a wellness room? Like when we go to the doctor and I take my grandkids or, or my, my children, I don't take the grandkids, their parents take them. But if I take, when I used to take my kids, there was a wellness room and there was a, a sick room. Will that be provided in, in the school? My biggest thing to you, what? My biggest thing to you, what guidelines are in place to secure a safe place for when our children return? And if there is a breakout, what is Plan B for Orange County to protect our children? So that we as school board members will know what to do? Do we have a plan?
Dr.
Yes.
I'm sorry, Dr. Pino?
Yes.
That's your entree to answer the questions. And Dr. Pino, I don't know, you probably can't see Dr. Gordon, but he has been taking COPS notes.
Oh.
Yes.
So with regard to the leaders, so let me explain what my role is in the county, because there are misconceptions about that.
Sure, it is.
So I am an employee of the state. I work for the governor, and my boss is the State Surgeon General. I am placed with 525 employees in the county to serve the county residents and to advise the mayor, in this case, on health and public health issues. That is our role. So we do not dictate policy at the county level, because that's at the state level, and, you know, others do that at that level, not me. So with regard to who to follow, I think everyone should follow the mayor. The county mayor is the head of the county, and in a case of an emergency declaration, becomes the head of emergency management. And we have a declaration of emergency, state of emergency for the county as the state in place. So that's who we follow. I, I, the mayor is receiving great advice from the healthcare systems and from others, and we also provide advice when asked, but we are in constant communication with the mayor, probably three times a day, on the defense issues and where is this going? With regard to vaccines, are we going to have a vaccine? So let's explain vaccine first. So not all vaccines are created equal. Not all vaccine, and this has the same immunization. It doesn't have, it doesn't build the same protection. All the vaccines are a little bit different. Now, these vaccines that are being created, I don't know if all of them, but some of them has been created using new methodology that was never, ever before used. Because the traditional way of making vaccines would have taken too long. It would have taken years to develop. So these, they are using a new approach. So with this new approach, if the vaccine is effective, and effective means it builds at least 60% of immunity in the community, at large, at least 60% of the people who takes the vaccine get immunity, then that will be quite an achievement. Now that I'm saying it's impossible, it's a new technology, so we don't know how much it can offer. Now, experts with better knowledge than me have said that we will have one by the end of the year, that's December or January. So, and even if we have a vaccine, then the question is, will people take the vaccine? Because you cannot force people to be vaccinated. And we know there has been a movement against vaccine that has quite rapidly propagated around the world, and that may play a role as well. So even if we have a vaccine, the question is, are people going to take the vaccine? With regard to the outbreaks, that's what we are doing mainly. The Health Department has focused and concentrated in outbreak containment, and we have been successful in doing that. We have large outbreaks in factories, places of business, bars, and other congregated places. And that's why I always said to you before, keep people in cohorts, so that in the case that we have to come to break an outbreak, we know where to go. Because that's critical. It's our facts, your response, and how well can your response to the condition. Normally, what we have done when we have the supplies, the workforce, which we have, and the information, which we hope we will have, is that we quickly move a strike team. A strike team is a bus with all the equipment, all the needs, up to five nurses, go into an outbreak, and test everyone at the same time. And sometimes we do it two weeks after, or a week after, so that we can catch something that may have not been fully expressed in the labs later. We have beginning experience doing that with the assisted living facility. And we are doing that quite well. Now, the question that the board member was expressing is interesting. You have 232,000 students. So it depends on how many outbreaks, how large those outbreaks are, how can we control it? Is it in one school? Is it all over? So there are many unanswered questions that we will not be able to answer, but we should develop strategies for all those instances that we can imagine. What it can now be is that we have a situation, and then we have a failure to imagine the solution for that situation. So that's, that's when our expertise comes. Not only a Plan B, as the board member said, but also a Plan C and D and F. If, if it's one school, should we close down the school and test everyone in the school? If it's multiple schools, it's just in a class, it's all coming from one zip code? So there are many unanswered questions that I would not be able to answer, but that we will have advice for you when we have those situations coming to, come into place. And we are in constant communication with your health services. So yes, it is true that our county doesn't have a nurse in each of the schools. And I'm going to talk about immunizations and the need for you in the future to think about developing, it's all about resources, I understand, but also developing some kind of plan where we can change those dynamics. And if we don't have a school per, a nurse per school, do we have area nurses, or we have a nurse that attend a few schools? But how can we increase those services? Because immunization, as I wanted to talk when I get there, is one of the issues, and we are going to immunize for this at some point. What we don't know is how effective it's going to be. Are we going to immunize several times to build immunity? So there are many unanswered questions, but we are developing plans for massive immunization. And we have the capacity to do immunizations 24/7 when it comes, and rotate the entire county through different structures to be able to just shot people and be able to give those shots, those immunization shots that they may need. And we have expertise doing that. Last year, during our back-to-school event, we vaccinated 4,000 children in two weeks. We did it, we did 8,000 shots of different vaccines to our students in just two weeks. We are planning the same event this week, this, this month, with different conditions due to the COVID. And I also have a Plan B for immunizations that I want to talk to you about. I think that addressed your questions.
Yes, I think you did extremely well in answering that, because one thing that confuses loose lips, think shift, and when people don't know who is in charge, I don't believe that when they introduce you every day, they never say that you are employed by the state and the surgeon general. Some of us already know that, you know, based on our mayor stating it in different. You, you also came to my church, which we were very, very grateful that you took the time from your busy schedule to do that, because you really didn't have to, based on your schedule. But I think when we get messages, and what's confusing America, is we're getting mixed messages. Wear a mask, don't wear a mask, congregate, don't congregate, go together, whatever, you know, congregate, I'm thinking of my math now, with the multiplicity of people out there doing that, which, which is so bad. But the mixed messages is that a lot of that's what's killing us. A lot, a lot of that's the killing, another concern I have. There are some children that have died. There are children that have died from this virus, okay? And I know that information is not put out there. But one thing about the school boards, one thing about teachers, one thing about paraprofessionals, we have connecting links throughout the United States. And some of us have connecting links in other countries that we share things. And there are children that have died, not just from the gun shop, but from this virus. And my major concern is, I, I know, I'm so glad you're doing what you're doing, and I hope people learn what, it, it, it's just hard, because people don't want to follow instruction. And this is what scares a lot of the parents that call me. They don't want to go and then they go somewhere within our facilities or whatever, and people are not wearing masks, they're not social distancing, they're not, you said it well. Yet, our former mayor is the chief of police and a sheriff, but because of people constitutional rights, they don't want to make people do things. And, and that, what, I'm just need to know, what is your opinion on that? Because until we come together and not just stay thinking about the others, but we also thinking about those rights of the people that want to, don't want to give it up, but yet they don't know of their spreader, what are you recommending that we do? Because like you said, our parents were arguing about vaccinating, you know, giving the children vaccines, when we were asking them to get their kids vaccinated. They even went and did reports showing that they shouldn't get vaccine, but those of us who chose to did, I'm here to tell you, they are healthier children today. They're healthier children today. So I have a concern. All of this is all well and good, but there are some people that will be in our school system that we will not be able to make them do anything, okay? So how, what is the word coming down? What, what's going to happen? I, I know you may not know, and I, and I know everybody is saying they have a constitutional right to gather, they have a constitutional right to do this, but yet people are dying. People are dying, and some people are suffering more than others. It tore my heart up when I saw many of the famous people that I knew die of this virus, and they were getting the best of treatment, but they didn't make it. And then I saw other people that were family friends up in New York, and they made it. And they were getting good treatment there, because they had a governor that just said, "Don't let me come out there and get you," okay? So I don't know how you're going to answer that, but I treasure you, I listen to you daily, three, four times a day, and I'm glad you are sent by the surgeon general, because he started putting on a mask. So I mean, I really thank you for that. So answer the best way you can, and let me see what I can gather or glean from it.
So with regard to a national strategy, the lack of having a national strategy that is implemented all across all the counties in the country, it could be a contributing factor to the fact that we are experiencing some increases. I'm not saying that all increases are due to that, but we are not separated anymore by fences or rivers or, or distance. We move, we move very fast. We can be in New York in three hours, that would have taken you three weeks a certain years back. And that is contributing to the fact that different places have different policies in place. So everyone is pulling in different directions. So that is a factor, I, I do recognize that. And with regard to vaccines, and it's an interesting dilemma. We were claiming for a cancer vaccine in the 70s. We got a cancer vaccine, preventive vaccine on the HPV vaccine, which people wrongly only associate with sexual transmission, which only can, it, it prevents sofocous cancer, it prevents oral cancer, it prevents a sort of number of cancers. Now we have the vaccine, and people don't want to get vaccinated, and we have the opposition to that vaccine. That is going to prevent cancer, the same vaccine that we invested billions of dollars from the 60s and 70s to get developed. So that we have no control. But with regard to the constitutional rights, and those are absolutely right, and those will be always respected, and I have the foremost respect for that, but we also have the moral and ethical obligation to protect others, and by protecting others, we are protecting ourselves as well.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Madam Superintendent and Board and Staff, and I look to hear what else you have to share with us. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Dr. Gordon. I had a question, Dr. Pino, on testing. Dr. Fauci had mentioned a concept, and I think it was what Member Burr was referring to, the idea of batching tests, so that we could do a large number of tests? And, and say you batch 25 tests, and if the whole batch comes back negative, you know all 25 are clear, but if it comes back positive, you have to circle back and test? I wondered, when I think about the lack of information that this board has, and of course, we just, we just lost a great deal of control, I think, over the decision-making based on what came out yesterday, at least as I interpret that, it sounds like we must, we must provide for 100% of our students, should they choose to, to come back five days a week. And I don't think 100% of our students will choose to, but it is impossible for us to adhere to the social distancing requirements in our classrooms. And the other recommendations we got from the state and from DOE also didn't expect us to try to accommodate that social distancing. So recognizing that we don't have enough information about how many of our students could be transmitting the virus, and we have a workforce, and we have students who have families that have much greater risk than the students themselves. We have, as you know, many families that, that have elderly parents, that have autoimmune deficiencies, we have many students in that situation, and we have many teachers, and I am, and we all are now acutely aware of many of them, and they're, every one of them is a precious life that we all take very seriously. Without the accurate information to know what that vulnerability rate is like, I don't know how our teachers even can make an informed decision of whether to risk their livelihoods and, or risk their lives. So the concept of being able to do mass testing, even though I know that the test today is irrelevant tomorrow, I think that's important for everybody to remember, that unless we test every day, we don't know. But at least we would have a barometer coming into this school year. If we were to either do a statistically random sampling of our students, which is probably difficult to, to do, because we wouldn't want it to be random, but, but statistically relevant, as you point out, we are going to have some zip codes that are going to have a higher rate of, of infection and transmission. So is that an option that could be considered here in Orange County, to do this, this batch testing as a more efficient use of our testing resources? And then coming back and retesting those populations to figure out how great is the rate among our students? And if that is, is that feasible to do before the start of the school year? And could that be a protocol that we could put in place periodically throughout the school year to at least know, even if we are required by state to keep our schools open? We also have the local flexibility based on the direction we get from you, from the mayor and from others, as to whether some of our schools need to close. And we also obviously always have the power of petitioning the state to reexamine their guidance, no, it's beyond guidance at this point, that I think that what I read was not guidance, it was an order. To revisit that order if the situation changes based on the data that we could collect from that kind of testing. To you, sir.
So batch testing, that's a lab choice. I think what, I didn't hear what he was saying, but I think what Dr. Fauci was referring to is that PCR testing. So there are three types of testing for COVID-19. One is the one that measures immunity, that's antibody testing. That's antibody testing. There are two types of immunity, IgG and IgM. So that's antibody testing. That doesn't test for the virus. It has, it only means you were exposed to the virus. You have developed immunity. That's all that it means. And then you have two testing for the virus, for the presence of the virus itself. PCR testing, which measure, looks for genetic material of the virus in your, in, in your nasal cavity or your mouth, whatever the sample is taken from. And then you have, um, antigen testing, which measures proteins from the virus. It detects proteins from the virus. The, the good thing about a PCR testing is that it's very, very accurate. The bad thing is that it takes time in the lab, meaning. And that's, I think, what he was referring, that instead of doing one test at the time, you can do 200. And if the sample is clean, you can move and you have, you don't need to look for that one. So I think that it was an idea to speed up lab, um, processing. And then you have antigen testing. That one is a rapid test. It takes 15 minutes. It's very fast, very, but it has a issue with false negative. But it's getting better. So those are the three tests. I think that was what he's referring to. But those decisions are made by the labs. And there are a multiplicity of labs at doing tests. And you have heard the mayors, you know, West and Corp. Yeah, but there are all there many small labs, uh, in Kissimmee, in Tampa, uh, even in Orlando that are performing tests and may have less of a capacity to do batches, uh, because those machines are bikes.
So to make sure I understood the answer there. So my thought, the way Dr. Fauci explained it is that all of these swabs or whatever, or blood samples, whatever, whatever they're testing, all get just put into one test tube and they do one test.
They mix it.
Yeah.
They keep samples of it.
Right.
They mix it all together.
Right.
And if that mix is negative, everyone else is negative.
Everybody is, is negative.
And then you test it one, not 200. Yeah.
But you're saying that's actually a more expensive, that batch testing is a more expensive.
No, 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 no. Not that the batch itself is expensive. The machines to do the testing for labs are not cheap. So what we are experiencing in Song is a bottleneck for the labs. And you also have to look at the financial perspective of this. Meaning labs, and again, that this is a question for lab and I'm not a lab person. Uh, but, um, the labs may also be thinking, can I reuse this machine after COVID into other, uh, processes that I might have in place? Or this is a machine that I can only use for this? How much are you going to invest? Am I going to have this volume in the future? Or are going to have the $3 million machine sitting because after COVID-19, what is coming? So the labs may having all those concerns. I haven't talked to the labs. I do know it's the case.
That, that answers my questions. I was hoping, um, I'm not trying to cut you off. I was hoping that you could tell us if that was something that you could do, but that is, that's a question we need to take to the labs. Okay. Um, let me go then to Member Caster Dental, and then we have Member Gallo.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I have a few more questions, but the first one's a quick one. Um, I've received emails stating that wearing masks can actually harm a person by depriving them of oxygen. Um, is there any truth to that or is that false information?
Um, I'm going to answer with a question. Do you think we will have any surgeons left? Is that was the case? They use masks all the time.
Thank you. Um, on the topic of masks, uh, you, you mentioned that we are to follow the mayor, the county mayor's, um, advice on masks. What if he pulls back that mask mandate? Do we need to follow that as well? Or, or what can we do as a district if we have a different opinion?
So what I say is that we should follow the mayor's leadership, not just a mask on everything else with regard to the pandemic. With regard to masks, the mayor ability is to mandate to use the mask or not. But we as individuals or the school board, as a school board, may have the discretion on what to recommend into, uh, the class environment. I don't foresee the mayor pulling that, uh, because it was a process to put it in. Uh, he was very judicious about it. Uh, talked to people for a week before making that decision. Look into another counties, how was implemented? That was around the country, asked for science-based information and data. So I think that is a solid decision that could stand for a while as we move into this.
Great, thank you. Um, another question about, um, the topic of hospitalizations that you were talking about. Um, you mentioned that right now we have, uh, it's not just an issue of available beds. We have beds and that there also is elective surgeries that are not, that might not happen in the future. Um, I have a friend who is at, uh, ORMC and says that they have over 300 COVID cases there and they can't get enough of the remdesivir to treat them. So, uh, and then this is the worst time to open schools. And she even said that it's like the movie contagion in the ER.
So the hospital, um, has, has an issue with volume, um, for a while. But remember, they're also part of a system. So the hospital has the ability, I'm not talking for the hospital.
Right.
But the hospital has the ability to transfer individual or three direct cases to other hospitals that are part of the system. Also a system, again, many of the people who are hospitalized in our county may not be president of our county. There are people around our county who seek care here. Because of the quality of the care, because of the sizes of the care that we offer. The flagship hospitals are in, in our county. And with regard, what was the other part with regard to the masks? The hospitals?
Hospitals, the remdesivir, the medications.
So remdesivir, we have plenty. Um, it is in our custody. We are dispatching every time that I order and the hospitals know how to order. Now there are protocols in place who they can use it on, and that may be a limiting factor. But I, I, that's, those are clinical decisions that I don't get involved. But we got remdesivir, we got, um, 1,600 dosage the first time and we, all that was replaced, uh, recently. So we have sufficient.
Thank you. Uh, I have another question that's kind of related with, as far as being regional. Um, I know we talked about possibly, um, looking at schools when there's like an outbreak and being able to kind of target a, a zip code or an area. But a lot of our teachers don't reside in that zip code where they teach. So that's going to be really difficult to, to kind of close down if we're just looking at a zip code. Um, and then I have a question about how we, um, go about the quarantining of a class or student? If there is a positive in one class, do you recommend that all of the students there are quarantined for the next five days? They go home and they stay home? Teachers, do, do the staff go home? How many, how many kids do you have to have a positive in a class to then take those measures?
So, um, that's an interesting question. First, you have two different populations and that's, that's, that's the difficulty of your decisions. You have an older segment, uh, of the population in teachers and, uh, your employees. And then you have the extreme young population in your students. And those are two different set of population. I remember that I was talking, that I mentioned before, because some people tend to misinterpret, uh, public health. It's not about the individual, it's about larger, it's the community, it's about the public. So all those, uh, reference that I made was intended on the students because they are the larger body that you have there. So if I, as a public health official, have to prevent transmission, I'm not talking about an individual getting infected, about transmission in the community at large. I will focus on what I have to prevent the most. And that's why I was talking about the students. Now for the teachers, it could be a little bit different because it's, I think, and you have more experience than I on that. But it's going to depend of the age of the student, the type of interaction that they have to have, how close you have to get to a child. That may depend of the age of the student. I imagine younger students may need closer contact, closer instruction than high schoolers who are more independent. So there are different situations that you have to take into consideration. And again, when, when we see your plan, and I hear, from what I hear, everything changed yesterday, um, with the new executive order. So it could be that we have to have another conversation on what to do based on the new instructions that you have received. But with regard to isolating and quarantine, it also depends when it happens. Because for example, if a child was Friday at school and he was fine without symptoms, but mom's call on Monday or Tuesday and saying that the child has been sick out, then we have nothing to do because we don't think that anyone was exposed. But if the child that has the same fever on Friday, a month come on Monday, I said, by the way, I keeping my child home because he has a fever. Then that adds another dimension because the child was physically in the space while he was infectious. So that's going to change the dynamics. Who will recommend to stay home and for how long they will recommend to stay home? For adults that has been exposed, potentially exposed and have a negative result, we allow them to come back to work. In our environment, our employees that have a negative result after exposure, they can come back to our environment, mask for at least 10 days because that's the cycle. So it's out of precautions. And again, a negative test today doesn't mean anything tomorrow. And that's, that's where we have to base our thoughts on it. This is a pandemic environment. I know you have an obligation to protect the children and that's not what I argue about it. I have that obligation as well. But our kids, and the parents should know this too, are going to be exposed to the virus, whether they are in school or they are in the community. It is going to happen. It is about protecting people at large and taking those steps independently on whatever you are. If you decide not to close the school, to close the schools, and that's your decision and do list and learning, whatever the issues are going to be, our parents will have to continue to protect those children from getting the disease. Closing the school, and I'm talking about public health right now, which is a policy decision, will not change the dynamic of the pandemic at the community at large. Will add things because the economy cannot move and no, and no one can move forward without the schools moving forward. That's clear because of the volume of the students and the parents and daycare and all the things that you will know that I'm not familiar with. But again, students have to be protected, whether they are in the classroom or they are at home.
Okay, just to clarify. If a student is at, in a classroom or an adult is in the classroom and they are, they have symptoms and they are able to spread it to someone there, everyone in that classroom who is exposed then hopefully goes and gets a test and then quarantines at home while they wait for that test result. That could be up to a week or more sometimes.
Yeah. You are trying to get an answer from me that I cannot give you? Because risk is personal, is independent. It depends on the circumstances. For example, in that same classroom that we have a child positive, everyone was masked and we were using social distancing. My quarantine advice would be a little bit different than if you have a child in an environment where no one was masked.
Okay.
So every single little thing plays in risk because risk is relative. Risk is not constant. It's relative to the circumstances in which occur.
Thank you. That I hadn't really thought about the other mitigating factors when they're exposed. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Caster Dental, Member Gallo.
Um, thank you, Madam Chair. So earlier you mentioned about being the same people in the same place. So I'm wondering what your recommendation, recommendation or what your thought process would be on creating like cohorts? Like would it make sense to have, to keep cohorts of neighborhoods together? Like elementary, middle and high school students in one cohort and send them to one schools so that we can even, I guess, more micromanage, um, zip codes down to an area so that we're really kind of slowing the contamination, um, just passive. So we would know that in individual neighborhoods that are always kind of interacting together would then be together if they chose to come back to school?
Well, I, I, you know, I'm, I'm new to the county, so I really don't know how the schools are districted. In, in Connecticut, where I'm from, it's totally different. Um, everyone goes everywhere. Uh, so that's a nightmare for public health in that sense. What I was referring to cohorts, although that could be, that's your decision. I was not referring to keeping a cohort from the same zip code together. I was referring, for example, if you decide to go 50% of the week in classroom and 50% at home, that everyone that comes on Mondays and Wednesdays are the same person that comes on Monday and Wednesday and they see the same teacher that they see on Mondays and Wednesdays. That was the cohort that I was referring. That if you have, if you have to go to a lab, um, um, you know, for a lab class, class in lab, that when you move that class, it's just that class in the lab and you're not mixing classes. That if you could stagger, but it's complicated because you have transportation issues and other issues to take into consideration. But do not bring everyone at the school, to the school at the same time massively. Like we normally do, you know, the keys running and happy and saying hello. That has to be curtailed somehow. We have to create traffic so that people are not bumping into each other or diminishing that as much as possible, detaching. You know, some district has become very creative around the world. Uh, in some places in China, uh, kids have these mayhats by the kids that have a distance so that they know each other when they are too close to the next student. So we can get creative in instructing little, uh, uh, children how to keep social distancing, how to wash your hands, how to mask. It's going to be a challenge, but is it going to be a challenge that we are going to face now or later, but in the near future?
So it would mitigate the risk though, to keep the same people together on a consistent basis?
It will, it will, it will not mitigate the risk. It will, um, it will make it a lot easier to break an outbreak if the people are.
Contact tracing.
Yes. I'm, I'm going there and saying, these 20 people need to be tested and these 20 people are going to be home until we get the results. Instead of wondering who was exposed, who may have been? Because in a pandemic, uncertain is, is, is the constant and you want to reduce that the minimum.
And then for students, um, like our ESE population who just will not keep a mask on, we have some students that it's just not feasible for them to wear a mask. What would your recommendation be for the teachers that, um, would, will interact with them? What, how can we keep those teachers safe? Would it be an N95 mask? What can we do?
So N95 are not needed in normal circumstances, although, although they protect, you know, they give you the highest protection. But in our case, um, we are having N95 for our dentists, people who are really close to the student. And it could be that in different ages, and I mentioned that with age of the student, risk may be different for the teacher. That's something that needs to be assessed. But wearing a mask is like being vaccinated. Meaning not because one person is not wearing a mask, everyone else is going to get it if they have a mask on. It could be that one child is not vaccinated, but if everyone else is vaccinated, everyone else is protected. So it could be that we have a child with a special education, autism or any other circumstances, respiratory issues, asthma. Well, perhaps that child could be more isolated and the word isolation, not from the classroom, but a space wide, more distance, better protected, in a better area in the classroom. Um, not too close to the teacher. There are many variables that you could consider. But a teacher wearing an N95 mask would be very protective. But a teacher wearing an N95 mask would be very protected from acquiring this way.
And then you mentioned transportation a few minutes ago. If we require masks for all of our students and our bus drivers on the buses, will that mitigate the risk even though we won't be able to physically socially distance those children?
If the masks are on, yes. What it has to happen is after that group pounds down, that bus needs to be disinfected. And because in a pandemic, you have to think always dirty and clean, dirty and clean. When I become dirty, now that bus is dirty. It was already used, so it has to be sanitized. And I think the county make an investment, the board has made some investment in some of the foggy machines and we are getting some more ourselves to help with our equipment. So that's a possibility as well.
Wonderful. And then my last question is, you mentioned that we have approximately 4,000 beds available in Orange County. How many ventilators do we have available?
If you want the exact number, I can access the data. This morning was 483.
Okay. Thank you so much.
And available, I mean, that are not used. We have a large number. And also some anesthesia machines can be compared into ventilators as well.
Thank you, Dr. Pino. I just wanted to clarify one thing before we move on. You mentioned that by keeping groups of students together, we are not mitigating, I think you said not mitigating the risk, but in fact, we're mitigating the spread, right? So to the extent that we can group our children, the spread can only be as big as the group.
Because risk is individual.
Right. Risk is individual, but the group dynamics of the spread increases the risk across the school.
Yes.
Thank you. I just was quite certain.
Because it was not risk, what I was talking about, I should have used the word transmission.
Yes.
It's what we're trying to mitigate.
Yes, thank you. Excellent. I can't tell you how, this has taken us a while, but this foundation is extremely important.
The superintendent lied to me. She said it would be 15 minutes.
I have to be honest with you, Dr. Pino. I have to be honest with you. I didn't know the superintendent lied, but she did. She knew it would be more than 15 minutes. We, boy, with this board.
No, she didn't say that.
No. Oh, I'm so glad to know that. I would hate for her credibility to be tarnished, especially with the, with the group that you're working with. Let's move on to the other important issue that you want to discuss with us. And equally important, we have literally thousands of people tuned in today. I'm thrilled to see that. I think the more we are all educated together, the more we can understand the difficult decisions we're going to have to make and make the best ones possible. And this next topic is extremely important and relevant. So please, take your time with us.
So I want to talk to you about immunization rates. And we just got fresh out of the press from the state. Our immunization rates are going to, it's a little bit complicated and dense, but I'm going to give it a straight. And it has too much numbers, too many, but I will try to digest it for you. But so what we are concerned as public health officials is to having a pandemic within a pandemic. And the one that concern us the most, because we have it every year, is measles. We have little outbreaks every year, here and there in the parks and you hear large outbreaks in California. And we have a few here that we have been able to contain because there is system in place. The concern with this is that because all the closing and the pandemic itself, our immunization rates for the state has declined in the last three months to bring it to levels that may be conducive to outbreaks. The immunization of the herd, and this is for the benefit of the public, I, I, you know this. So why do we try to immunize people? Is the first question. So there are two, the most important two achievements that we have as humans in our conquer to live longer are very simple right now. Is one was washing your hands. When we learned, you know, years and years ago, that washing your hands is critically important, we stopped transmission of many germs. To the point that in the past, well, the surgeons were the barbers. And what they will do is in their apron, clean their hands because the more blood that you show, the more operations and surgery you did. And we learn and learn over time that washing your hands was critically important not to transmit to others and to yourself when you acquire for environment. And the other biggest jump that we have in, in our life expectancies were vaccines. CHAHO vaccines made us live longer and the population increased to the sizes that we have. Because people, many children will die before age one. And we continue to see that in other areas of the world, Africa, Saharan, Asia, and some countries in Latin America. So our insistence is to increase the immunization of the herd, you need to have at least over 60% of the population vaccinated with a vaccine to have immunization of the herd. The idea is that by having people immunized, you can protect the people that cannot be immunized. Either because they have a clinical condition, either because they are allergic to vaccine or whatever the situation could be. Think of this like jumping note. Like the water in the fountains that do this is the virus or the pathogen, whatever it is, virus or bacteria, will jump until it finds a person that is vaccinated. When you find a person that is vaccinated, the transmission stops right there. So in the case of outbreak, we may get one student with measles. But if we have only one student or two in the class that are not vaccinated, then it's not going to propagate around the class because it doesn't have a host to jump to. The more children we have that are not vaccinated, the more chances a pathogen have to jump from student to student doing, you know, having an outbreak. So that's vaccines 101. Next slide, please. So this is our entry compliance for kindergarten. And this looks at children who are six, four, five and six years old. And in, in the first column, you have Orange County and in the other column, you have the state. So we are, for the most part, performing better than the state. But this should not be, the state should not be the place that we use to compare ourselves. We are Orange County. We can be better than anywhere in the state of the nation. And I'm serious, this county has it. So by six, by, by six years old, 68% of the students in Orange County are in compliance in general with everything to be ready for kindergarten or for school. Next. Now, this is seventh grade compliance. And we have opened our vaccinations sites for seventh grade intensively because most of them only requires one upgrade. And it's very quick. It's just come in, have one and, and go. And that's doing fine. We have probably, I don't have the number, I should have gotten the number for today, but it should be close to 2,000 of the students. But that's a, that's a little dent because we have, I believe, 17,000 students that are moving from six to seven in the school district, the school, the, so analysis for us. And I believe 11,000 of those students were not up to date in the vaccination coming into seventh grade. So that's, that's an issue. Next. This is MRR completion. Now, this table is complicated and this is the one that is complicated. So the first number in the first column is the percentage at that age that receive a valid vaccine. And, and trying to learn this data myself because it's different in Florida than how it's presenting other states. Now, complete means that the person have all the dosage that he needs at that level. So of course, completion increase as you're getting older because the kids are going to, you know, the two years old, the four year old, the six year old, when the vaccine is in the schedule. And in the next column, you have the state. So our percentage again are higher than the state, but we can do much, much better. Next. So with that, one of your board members was asking, what is our plan B for vaccination? And we recently have been in conversations with a company called Health Hero Florida. I don't know if you heard about them. So they are, they are, in other states, they have present and in other counties in, in Florida, where they come in two weeks and do all the flu vaccinations for the entire school district in two weeks. We are, we are very pleased with what they have presented to us. And they have reserved two weeks in October, I believe, for Orange County. So at some point, we have to give the occurrence that we are going to have those vaccinations happening in those two weeks or they will have to give it to another county. What they do, and at some point, we could present more to you when, if you wanted to entertain this idea, is that they, they come with nurses and they go school by school and normally can complete three schools a day because they come, five or six nurses do all the vaccinations. They don't charge the students and they don't charge the board at all. What they do is if the student has insurance, they collect the, the rate, the administration fee from the insurance company because the vaccines are free in Florida for children. Why are we thinking about using this strategy of having a private provider coming? Because you don't have enough resources in school nurses. We don't have it either. Vaccines are also, although it can happen through the year, we can handle that through the year. But the massive amount that we need to bring good compliance to our school system have to happen intensively in specific times when you do this type of vaccine. And it becomes easier and easier as your rates increase because you have less and less children to get into compliance. Now initially, they are, will be only doing flu vaccine. Why are we so interested in flu vaccine now? Because flu vaccine, flu season is closed, so in the fall. And scientists are predicting that we may have another wave of this virus in the fall. And what we don't want to see is flu overlapping with COVID-19. So in general, for the population at large, not just the students, we are going to intensively try to vaccinate as many peoples as we can against the flu to prevent a misdiagnosis and other issues that could happen when you have overlapping diseases that basically symptomatically speaking behave very similar. And how are we going to test massive number of people who may experiencing the flu to determine that they don't have the flu, that what they have is COVID-19? I think the best way is to prevent people from getting the flu. Now, you also could go into how effective the flu vaccines are and all those issues. That is a reality that is out there, that even when it's less effective, continue to be effective for a large percentage of them. With that, if you have any questions, my 15 minutes are up.
Madam Chair. Okay, we have Member Covert to be reckoned. I'm sorry, Dr. Jenkins has a question.
That was me, actually. It's not a question. I want to reassure Dr. Pino because we've covered so many other items, I neglected to tell you this, but we did mention Health Heroes to the board. They were very supportive. We'll be bringing the official resolution at the next board meeting on the 14th under the consent agenda. And we will communicate with Health Heroes to keep our spot reserved for the end of September. Wanted to give you that reassurance.
Oh, you see, all this time was now wasted. Thank you. I really appreciate it. It's, it's going to make an impact. Because part of the conversation with Health Hero Floridas is also if it goes well and we want to do it like we do in public health, one thing at the time, do it well and move on, not to get too many things going on together because the sauce will not taste the same. So what we are trying to do with them, and we have this conversation with them, can they help us with flu this season? And they will encourage, can we encourage them to help us with vaccination rates next year when we are in a very position, I assume in the pandemic will be in another stage different than what it is today, so that we can increase those levels.
Excellent. All right, let's hear from Member Castor, Member Covert and then Member Castor Dental.
Thank you, Chair. I just want to make the statement that it's obviously become very apparent that the public school system is critical to the public health as a whole. So I appreciate you bringing this opportunity to us for Health Heroes. And my only question is, the vaccinations are available to students, are they also available to employees? Or is this just for students?
You know, I didn't ask that question to them, but ethically, it should be to everyone.
That would be great. If not, Superintendent, I do have a resource that has come to me who to volunteer to immunize our employees as well on campuses. And I'll get you that information. Thank you so much.
Absolutely.
Excellent. That's right. Good news. Thank you, Member Covert. Member Castor Dental.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And Dr. Pino, we were working on this issue last year. Before you arrived here, we recognized that our vaccination rate for measles was low and we did partner with the Public Health Department. And we were able to set up some clinics for students, but we were not able to get nearly as many kids as we needed. And I think we could benefit from added communication into some of the neighborhoods. And I, when I was looking at a lot of the data, the Public Health Department was, their rate of vaccination was very high and, and kids who went to the Health Department as their primary care physician. And it was a lot of, of other students mixed throughout the county who were not receiving their MMRs and vaccinations. So it's, it's not just a certain demographic, but it's a pretty broad spread. And I would imagine that with the reduction of students going to the pediatrician these days, that it is much lower. And my concern last year, when we realized our immunization rates were so low, was not just for those students who could get immunized, but for those who can't. Not just those who wouldn't, but again, for those who can't, those students who are undergoing chemo or have, their immune system is compromised, they are, they run a huge risk of interacting with, with people, with students who have not gotten immunized. So it's more the pandemic, like you said, within a pandemic. But this is one with a vaccine and one we can control. And I appreciate your partnership in this.
Absolutely. Thank you. I was surprised, you know, last year when we vaccinated 4,000 children in two weeks, I have never seen that been done. Vaccinations in other places take, take place mainly in the primary care office or the pediatrician. And that's also an expression of health disparities. Who is getting vaccinated? Where are they getting vaccinated? Who is having, having access to the vaccine? Even when the vaccines are free, even when we are not collecting any fees. And part of the issue is that healthcare is complicated because it's also about childcare. It's also about access. It's also about transportation. It's also about how can we make it easier for the parent who has 20 different things to do besides putting food on the table and making, you know, the mortgage payment and all the rent, to have access to the vaccine that will make it easier for them to have their child immunized. Because if we make it too convoluted, it's not going to happen.
Member Gould, Vice Chair Gould. And I have a question for you, Vice Chair Gould, when you're finished with your comments.
And, and as you know, outside of the school board, we, we work very closely, Shepherd's Hill works very closely with the Health Department and you have been a great partner. I, I just wanted to reiterate what Member Castor Dental was saying about any way that we can partner with you to get the immunizations out via the schools or the not-for-profit communities. All of us on the board have different spheres of influence and we would be happy to help.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Dr. Thank you, Vice Chair Gould. Dr. Gordon?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you wonderfully. Thank you.
A point of clarification, Madam Chair. Can I make my point?
Please.
I would hope that in our procurement system, that Dr. Jenkins is in charge of operations and that we do not overstep our boundaries. Did I not hear or Member Covert say that she has? Did I not hear Board Member Cobert say that she has, let me see what my notes say, an emergency for the employees? I am an employee of OCPF, and I would really wait on the Surgeon General office, who he's sent out here, Dr. Pino. I think, I don't want us to overstep our boundaries. We have a procurement system within the school system, and it is not for board members to bring any particular agency here to immunize anybody. I'm getting pissed off now because, and I'm also hearing partnership and influence. We need to know our role. Listen, did you not hear on the news all those kits that were not open, those kits that were ordered, that were not thrown? Ladies, let's follow procedures. I'm sorry. I'm not giving any, yes, I know of agencies because we run into them, but we also tell them to check with our superintendent. I don't want my name placed, I'm trying to go out with a good name. I don't want my name placed on any immunization, and I just asked that question earlier, and for my point, and I'm still making my point. I asked that question earlier because I asked Dr. Pino about who do we follow? Who do we listen to? So are we going to be listening to the boards who come in with their special companies and agency? Are we going to listen to the superintendent who is working with Dr. Pino under the direction of the Surgeon General? So what I'm trying to say, I'm not trying to get you down, but I think we need to listen, and matter of fact, we really need to listen and move on. There are over 4,000 people out here listening with me. And I know we have our talk, and that's why I asked earlier, because we not do one day. But since we are doing the one day, there is a lot. Now, you know, I don't, you know, I don't know how many of you had called or talked or find out where to get information, but there's so many awesome agencies like you saying that are giving us these answers. And I don't know if we are doing it because you got to do it for you or whatever, that I really don't want my, my, my name associated with partners out there that we can influence the superintendent and to have where the employees can be immunized by other than what the Surgeon General is relaying down to Dr. Pino. He already gave the order of command, and that was my reason for doing that. So if I've offended anybody, I cannot say I'm sorry, because now you're messing with my life. I don't know who these people are that Ms. Cobert is talking about, bringing in that can help immunize the employees. If she would at least give us some information on that, then I will, I will ask why. I would have to ask why. Because there's a proper way for us to secure these immunizations, and then we may not be the one to have to do it. And I don't know if we need to partner. Dr. Pino just said he did not know, according to my notes. So now, my point is, I'm confused. So if Member Gould would like to clear up, and Member Cobert first, like to clear up that statement that she is going to help immunize through a company, our employees, I'm interested to know that at the table now, so that the 4,000 people, most of them are employees that are listening in, but know who is coming to immunize, immunize. Okay, I'm getting upset, I'm getting upset. So Madam Chair, I turn it back over to you and the superintendent, but basically, I want to hear the point coming from the two board members.
Thank you, Dr. Gordon. I think that there is a clear misunderstanding. Dr. Jenkins, let me turn to you first, and then if we need clarification from Member Cobert, we can get that. I did not understand her to say what Dr. Gordon understood. Member, Dr. Jenkins?
Thank you, Chair, and thanks again to Dr. Pino. I want to set Dr. Gordon's concern at ease. We certainly would not be looking to provide anything outside of the procurement process. Our actual, yeah, our actual insurance company, Cigna, has some significant programs that they offer for our employees. And so we are prepared, so we are prepared to make sure that immunizations can be offered. We have a flu clinic right here in this building that more and more folks are taking advantage of. I get my flu shot right here every year. And so I believe Member Cobert actually was speaking of someone that's already in our network for our employees, but we will make sure all of those rules are followed. I certainly appreciate your pointing that out so I could clarify. Let me also...
Let me stop you, Dr. Jenkins, that's my point, and I'm trying to make it. I did ask you here for Madam Cobert, and my reason for doing that is, we have to be so very careful because if they're in our network, they still have to go through our procurement process.
All right, I'm gonna, I'm gonna turn to Dr. or to Member Cobert. Let me, I do want to, I do want to keep us on track here because we have a lot to cover.
I don't think we are off track.
Well, we disagree on that. Let's hear from Member Cobert.
You got me off track. Now, you're going to start again.
I'm sorry, I have the floor, and we're going to hear from Member Cobert. Member Cobert, you're recognized.
But you did me the same way. Let's not play the black-white thing. I'll call it in.
This is not a black-white thing. This is protocol.
You never stop your white board member. Do not stop, Ms. Teresa Jacob. You never interrupt your white board member. You're not going to interrupt a guy over the meeting and let those who are going to make a point make their point.
Do you yield the floor? As the chair, I have control of the floor at this point. I was not interrupting you, actually. But I do need to hear from Member Cobert so she can respond to your question. Member Cobert, can you clarify what it was that you were offering in terms of support?
Thank you, Chair. Yes, under the topic of my question to Dr. Pino, whether employees were included with this program, I had been approached by our own partners, Cigna and CVS, about the opportunity to not just have the clinic at the RBELC, but the opportunity to have their pharmacists go into our schools, making it more convenient for employees, which I brought to the superintendent as a possibility. And yes, they would need to go through all of the proper protocols. But it was...
It needs to go through the procurement. That's the only point I'm trying to make, and we better be careful and draw a thin line on what we offer out in the public.
Very good.
Because we don't want any, we don't want Walgreens or Walmart or any others, because I'm going through this in my county. Right now, we're going through insurance in my county where I work. So you have to be very careful.
Okay, Mr. Dr. Pino? I wanted to make one suggestion, if I could. You have been, as Dr. Gordon pointed out, you have been very visible. We see you, not every day, but very frequently. You have been highly credible, and you have been authentic. And when you talk about the, the need for vaccines next year, I think that your public persona has put you in a position to be an incredible advocate for this. And so we will join you in this, obviously, but I just don't want you to ever underestimate how influential I think you will be to the population here in Orange County because of your credibility and your authenticity. So I think because of you, we do have an opportunity, and we should never accept being better than the state. We can do much better.
Much better.
Okay, Dr. Jenkins?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. I'm getting the feeling that it's probably a good time for a break. I actually need a break, but let me give two answers. Let me give two answers to Member Lopez, because I don't want to let those carry on if, if I actually had the answers. You posed a question of how many of our employees were in that 65 and over. I can't tell you how many have critical health issues because that would take longer to calculate, but for the one, for the ones that are 65 and over, we've got 25,000 employees, 1,040 of them are in that 65 and over category. And then the second question was the average age, so I can break that out for you. Our overall average is 45. For admin technical, it's 47. For classified, 49. For our food nutrition services, 49. For instructional, 43. And then for our professional instructional, it is 45. That'd be school psychologists, 45. And then our part-time hourly are the youngest average at 38. Wanted to make sure we answered that question because I had it sent to me swiftly and wanted to share that as well. And certainly want to again thank Dr. Pino for his tireless commitment to helping us walk through these issues. I may not have promised him 15 minutes, but I don't think I told him he'd be here until nearly 3 o'clock. And so I know he has other things on his agenda. Welcome to stay as long as he's willing, but I believe he has other things on his agenda for today. Thank you so much for kindly working with us and continuing to work with us.
Thank you, and thank you for this opportunity. It's now very often that we can come in front of you to talk a little bit about public health.
Dr. Jenkins, before we take a break, I want to first ask the board to consider this when we come back. I want to hear from Vice Chair Gould whether she feels that she can effectively chair the remainder of the meeting if I need to step away for any reason. I should have taken care of that piece of business at the beginning. If Vice Chair Gould does not feel that she can effectively chair through this distance approach because we don't have the same webinar capabilities, then I was going to suggest that we elect, for the purpose of this meeting only, a vice chair for this meeting, and I did have some thoughts about that. So let's come back with that decision as the first order of business. We should be able to move on that quickly. And Dr. Jenkins, I don't recall since I've been here when we've needed to take a break. I would customarily have thought 10 minutes. Does that seem appropriate? 10 minutes. So we'll be back here at the hour, oh, that says 2:05, but that is not right, at the hour of, I'm sorry, 3:05. Let's call it 3:05, okay? Thank you. Meeting is recessed.